Let's call the meeting to order. Looks like all present and accounted for.
Yes, sir.
Before we get down to the agenda, I would like to add one item under, we'll call it, we'll call it G. Paraprofessional requests for leave of absence. And does anyone else have any additions, deletions, anything? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
I'm going to motion.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Jerry. Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Schedule presenters, Andy?
Well, ready?
I asked Andy to come tonight because I wanted you guys to hear it from him. Still have the rest of the buses. I mean, he and I work really together when it's a few fix-it small things. We've still got four buses with some pretty, actually five if you want to count all, everything we need to do. So I thought maybe you guys could directly ask Andy some questions on what needs to be done.
Andy, I wonder if you could slip up here in front of the whiteboard here. You can.
Bright light.
Except for a spotlight. Andy, you're here for, it says on here, round two for bus repairs. So apparently everything that we attempted to get done, we couldn't.
Well, before it was, it was a funding issue.
Sure.
And you guys did half of them on last, on the last deal. So, and they did a good job. And they came in like way cheaper than, W. and Beth were a little bit skeptical of the job they were going to do, but they did do a good job, really good job. So, we're happy for that. So really, there's, yeah, there's five buses that need to be done. And we've been working on some as we go also. But there's a bus seventeen, actually needs like eight thousand dollars worth of work, but we're not going to do that. The bus ain't worth it. But for two thousand dollars, we're going to do that ourselves in-house and fix that one up good enough to get through inspection. Because the deal is, is you can't, you can, you can have rust and we can cover that up with paint and Bondo and stuff, you know, before inspection, but there can't be holes in the bus. And they'll go around and poke the bus. And if they find a hole, they call it a sharp intrusion. That's twenty-five points and that automatically fails the bus. And all we have to do is get a couple of twenty-five pointers and then they'll be coming back more than once a year. So it's kind of a, tend to have to, at least have the buses that good, you know? But, so there's no holes in them. So there's bus seventeen, we're going to do that for two thousand. And then the other four buses, we'd send back up, up there. Forty-six hundred or so for bus sixteen, twenty-two hundred for bus five, thirty-one fifty for fifteen, and forty-four hundred for nineteen. So that comes to sixteen thousand three thirty-nine, around there.
And the next closest bid was twenty-seven thousand. And this I-State can do it for sixteen.
So, we don't have the money, we don't have the money, we'll just have to, you know, because they got holes in them. The buses that are left actually have, you know, holes like this big all the way around the wheel wells. So they're obvious.
So it's all bodywork, all that?
It's bodywork, yeah.
Well, Andy, did the sixteen thousand include the two thousand on bus seventeen?
Yes.
Back with that bill.
And is this, is this the same priorities that we talked about, I think, in the spring?
Yep.
This is just the next level?
Three went there, yeah.
Right.
We get the first bunch, this is the second bunch.
Okay.
And inspection's in January, so.
So, we're going to send like one bus out at a time?
Right.
Do I get it back, because one of them may be?
Right, right. Well, that's the other deal. If you get twenty-five points and they down a bus, well, it's got to get fixed before they inspect it again. What happens if they don't? Three of these buses, we only have been spared, you know? Now.
Right.
So, well, one, spared besides the charter buses.
Maybe an unfair question, Andy, but what's the chances of these having issues now and then having one again next year, having the same thing done?
This done?
Yeah.
Oh, this will last for two or five years.
Okay. Those spots.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But they are, we are doing, well, it means, these buses are all getting over the wheel wells, where they can mostly rust out. And then from the wheel wells back is what's getting done.
Okay.
So all those panels are getting inspected or replaced.
I-State will be doing more than just the holes. Like that eight thousand dollars was on.
Right, that'll be all the panel. That'll, that bus probably is, the panels are all routed from probably about here down.
You can see all the way.
And they'll replace all the panels on that, both of those sides.
So we ever worry about the, the running gear in these and the motors? How are those holding up with every?
We work on them every day, so, I mean, we don't have enough money right now to buy new buses, so we need to, we got to fix them.
And this is the outside panel, this isn't any of the floorboards? Because I know you had floorboards, I thought.
Yep, and we did get those fixed. Otherwise, they won't just, they wouldn't pass inspection this January.
Right.
Last time they were here, they had three buses, they wanted new, a new floor put in up, above the rear wheels, and we already did that with the last money. So that part's done, which we're going to work for. We're going to come back and look for those in January.
Okay. Where do we get the money for this? We have it?
We, I have set aside money for this type of upkeep. The problem with that is that rules out everything else that we were looking at. You know, we've got some technology upgrades and some other things that we really want to get done. And so it's becoming, everything's a choice right now. And that's, you know, why next January, we're going to have to start really talking referendum because we are, we're making choices between a computer and fixing a bus. And it's getting to the point where that's just not good. So, yes, we have the funding for this because we knew we were going to be looking at it, but it kind of depletes our extra fund a lot, almost to bare bones. Yeah, I've got to give Andy a ton of credit. They do so much of it in-house. We're saving a fortune. And a lot of schools don't have the opportunity to work with a company like this that does it really at an inexpensive.
We're just charging her for the parts.
Right.
Or we're not charging, you're just paying for the parts and we're just fitting it in our day to do what we can, you know, for buyer.
Very lucky to have that, so. And like I said, when we went up, we sent this up for bids the first time, the next closest one, you know, it wasn't even, so we were a little nervous about using this I-State.
Right.
But boy, they came back perfect.
Is the new ones up by the Coke Refinery Plant?
They're up there.
Yeah, up there, yeah.
In the group?
Big truck shop.
Yep.
So you know what, I guess I'm looking for is just some leeway that, what do you want Andy and I to do? Last time you approved twenty-four thousand. We need about sixteen to do all of them. But even at this board meeting, if you could give us eight to ten to get started, I'd feel good about that. If we could do the whole sixteen, we could get these buses done and, and everything would be ready to go.
How much is fifteen to fix?
Fifteen is three thousand one hundred and forty-two, is what the bid was.
You know, my opinion is if we have the money to do it, even though we're robbing Peter to pay Paul here, and we're going to eventually need it all, you know, to save, say eight through ten now, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think we just press forward, especially if we can somehow find money in our threadbare budget to do it. We got to do it.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I got people stranded. Don't worry.
My guess is we can make this a voting item this evening if we choose to.
Sure.
And I would, I would say that we either procrastinate another month or take care of this, so.
Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the sixteen thousand dollars to fix the five buses that need to be fixed.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Brenda. Now, it was a little more than sixteen. Did you, did you want to amend that to the, whatever the?
Cost.
Yeah, schedule cost is or whatever.
Yes, do we have, do you have that number? Sixteen three thirty-nine. Sixteen three thirty-nine? And I make a motion, I amend my motion to have that number at sixteen hun, sixteen thousand three thirty-nine to repair our buses.
And last time, they did come under. They came lower than the estimate, so.
And Brenda, you concur on your second?
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Old business, we have none, so we'll drop down into new business. Item six, the approval of insurance and compliance with the state and federal law prohibiting discrimination, attachment A. Who speaks to this?
This, you have done every year. This is every buddy that owns a company, when you write the little verbiage underneath, "We are an equal opportunity employer," and that, the, all the verbiage you put behind that, that's what this is. So, you just have to be in compliance with that, make sure we're following the state and federal laws.
Motion by Jerry. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Item B, approval of the annual report on curriculum, instruction, and student achievement attachment B.
Is it Tim?
Tim, the floor, you win.
Again, this is one of those annual kind of things that the state requires of us, so this is updated significantly from what has been passed. I met with the curriculum committee in September to, and got their opinions on some things they'd like to see changed. And we added a lot of stuff and kind of cleaned some things up, so.
Questions for Tim?
I just had one thing, Tim, I wanted to read through this. When we look at the target for the Ames Web, what determines the target on that?
Derek?
Yeah, that's a good question. I believe it's kind of based on norms.
Right.
What, but every, every school district that they service throughout, whoever, I don't even know how.
It's an, it's an average of three years.
So of the three years, they take a kind of a norm data reference point that they use as a baseline.
And this is the third year for Ames Web testing, so.
And that's a nationwide thing?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
And they've changed significantly from last year to this year, so there's quite a difference in norms. Maybe that cabinet will have to come in and explain that to us sometime.
And that can give you all the information. If you ever want any of the spreadsheets on any of that, we can check that for you.
So, so it's kind of hard to tell, but are we always on the left-hand side of the graphs? The colors are so close.
Yeah, the colors are close.
And I don't blame anyone for the black one, I appreciate it. But are we always on the left?
I don't know where Tim put them.
Yes.
Okay.
The key at the top should tell you which ones.
Well, it does, but they're all sort of the same color.
Right.
The color's wrong.
I don't even remember what colors these started out in. They're boring.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to say I commend the district for making the AYP for the last three years, and I think they improve the plans are really having a good effect with the RTI and the assessments that you guys are doing and monitoring. Interventions are really working, so, good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this report.
I'll second. Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Item C, approval of the Jerry Bowen Scholarship. Mr. Bowen's family?
Yeah, we just have to approve all scholarships, and this is what it says. We're very grateful that these families think of our graduating seniors. So this is a great opportunity for a kid.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Kurt, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. The approval of the resignation of Pam Ranky, care professional. It is not an attachment, don't go looking for it.
This could possibly be one of the hardest letters of resignation I've ever accepted. Pam has dedicated her life and career to this school, and we got to looking back, and I don't even think she took any sick days the entire twenty-four or so years that she was here. She's just a remarkable person, these kids know her. She, I wish you could see her letter. It's just, she's passionate about the school and these kids, and she knows all of them. She knows their names, she knows their families, and she dedicated herself to being a paraprofessional for this district and, due to health concerns, it's time for her to take care of herself and her family, and, and we wish her the best of luck. And she's planning on coming back and volunteering the minute she's ready, so we're excited for that. And just tough, tough one because she's just, she's given her life to this school.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Pam, and thank her for her use of service to the school district.
Thank you, Brenda.
I'll second both. Both of those.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Approval to hire Dania Benson as the transportation coordinator. I think, Rob, you're on the transportation committee and you were involved.
Yep.
Wish to speak to this at all? Process?
Interviewed four candidates. We had the transportation paid to representatives from the bus garage. Beth, Roy, and myself were there. We had a candidate who was actually excited to bus split her day up and working part mornings and part afternoons, which we found was pretty rare. She fit all the requirements, she's done dispatching in her background in a couple of different companies. Globally, she grew up here, went to school here, has computer skills, so she hits pretty much all the departments that we're looking for.
And she started at eight o'clock this morning. We were happy that she was ready to go. She met all the drivers this morning.
Good.
I'll make, make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Discussion of the employment reference handoff from Knutson, Flynn, and Deans. Beth?
You know, I, I went to the conference and I've got that in my superintendent report for M.S.A., M.A.S.A. And this was one of the breakout sessions I thought was really interesting. As school board members, a lot of times you would have called for references and things like that, or redo calling and, and the things you can and can't ask. You know, this doesn't need to be a big item. I just thought it was a good attachment for you all to kind of review because there were quite a few things in here that I didn't know, and a lot of statutes on that limit what you can and how you should answer questions. I also, we'll be handing this out and talking about it at my admin meeting tomorrow with the administrators, because again, we get calls, my gosh, all the time on former employees, current employees, things like that. So it's meant to be just a reference tool for you, but I thought there was some good information to just kind of stick away. Very good cause, very, very good cause.
Anyone have any comments? Have a chance to look at it and want to make a comment on it or anything?
Just to have it.
Both of the others.
All right. These are moving right along here. Sorry for everybody that wants to stay longer.
Packers must not complain.
Item G. Item G, the paraprofessional requests for a leave of absence. Beth?
You know, we, we seem to be getting a lot of these. We have a paraprofessional that is asking for a leave of absence until November 2nd. I don't know if you have specific questions, that's the information, she'd like to take a month off.
Does this, I mean, we've had these requests lately, but we've been denying certain ones. How does this fit into the ground of the other ones?
You know, her father passed away, and she would like to take a month to be able to settle the estate and things like that. Special education pairs are, those kids really bond with the para, and it is difficult for them sometimes to be with someone new, and then they get someone new for a month and, and not. Again, I can approve, and Derek can approve, and we have, until this Friday, we can allow her to take up to ten, ten days. She's taking those unpaid, but she wants to add on the month on top of that, so at that level, it needs to come to you. And I don't know if you have specific questions, but that's kind of what I have on that.
It's in the contract to be able to do so.
It, it is, if approved by the board. And it depends, you know, up to you if you think the cause is, you know, if it's a, a medical leave or a health leave, those are different. Usually attached with a doctor's note or something like that. I don't know.
Do we have someone to cover?
Not really. We are, we've got two more ready to take the, the para protest, para protest this next week. It's hard to say, it sounds, comes out like protest.
Protested.
So, no, we're very, very short on subs. Actually, probably the shortest, Derek quote me if I'm right, but I think Terry said the shortest we've ever been on subs. We are.
So, we're kind of banking on these, on two at least that are taking this test here shortly.
If they don't pass.
We're really banking on them passing. So I hope they do, was, we're going to do really short. We have enough to cover, but not for people being gone.
So, so when would she be coming back?
November, well, it'll be through November 2nd, which is a Friday, so third, fourth, fifth, November 5th she'd come back.
And she, 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 per, per contract, she can get ten days, ten working days?
That's all out, we can approve any short-term leave. It's, if it goes anything over the ten days, we really got to take it to board. Because that's a long-term leave.
So kind of what we're talking about is, is not ten, we're not talking about a month, we're talking about an added two weeks.
Talking about an added thirty days, I think.
You already did the ten days, right?
Yeah.
Oh, they already did the ten.
We'll be out there.
Another thirty.
Almost, yeah.
I don't know if I can answer this question. Is it local or is it family elsewhere?
Can I answer that question? Yes, it's local.
Okay.
You know, I, again, we're, we're starting to tread on some ground here, in my opinion, that if we, if we begin, there's no turning back. Whatever the, whatever the origin of the request was, we're making a statement here that at the last meeting, we essentially denied, and it was probably for a different reason, but we denied it. Contractually, I think we're obligated to the educators.
That is true.
And, and that isn't in the contract here, I don't think.
No.
So, you know, it.
Hey, it's, it's an unfortunate situation. I, I worry about setting precedents in situations like this, too.
And I always have to think about that. I think our admins are, are, are not willing to throw out their opinions directly, but if I could read into it, we're, we're very short right now. This will make us shorter than we'd like to be, for sure.
I mean, the reason for the request is a little bit different, but really, the hardship comes back to the district if we approve this. There's not necessarily a serious hardship on the employee. Right? Don't know.
I didn't, I didn't ask.
Okay. But it will be a hardship on the district.
I would say in this case, anytime we lose, I mean, my opinion on that, Rob, is anytime we lose a staff member we've trained and we've, you know, got in the system, it's always difficult to have a sub, but we've had subs walk in and do a great job, too, so.
So, I guess on the flip side, if we do, or do not approve, any idea what their plans are? They're just going to?
Again, I didn't ask.
Okay.
I mean, the death in the family is different than why you go to Florida for the winter or something like that, or it is, should be a little more consideration, I guess.
I, I agree with Brenda. I think this is a little different situation than we faced the last time, and maybe something different than we'd face on future requests. You know, having been in a situation where I have to do some planning at that point in time, it is a, it's quite a stressful experience.
It for sure is an emotional argument, but again, I just, I, I keep harping back, whatever I feel like personally, we're going to do this over and over again, and we'll have to treat everyone individually. And, you know, I'm not sure how often it will happen, but I guess I'm, I'm skeptical as, as a board member, I guess, because you have it begin.
Do we have to go with an additional thirty days or?
Okay, she, what she wrote in her letter, she'd like to go through November twen, November 2nd. That was her, her request. It'll be unpaid, so you're not paying two people.
Right.
Some of her other requests have been to take another job. Some of her other requests have been to, you know, go south for the winter because their family is. This one is unique, but again, a leave, we have a lot of people that, you know, lose family members. And we do a bereavement leave and, and things like that that are in there, and that's what that ten days is kind of for, but.
So the ten days is already gone?
It'll be done this Friday.
Oh. Okay. And you're testing two paras next week?
At least two, if not three, I know, two for sure.
And it takes how long?
No, actually not next week, it's twenty-something.
Twenty, twenty, thirty, twenty first?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
We did get a variance, I mean, they can work, until they, as long as they're registered for the test, they can work.
What's, what's your personal opinion on this? You deal with employees day-to-day.
Thank you, Mr. Britton.
Well, I think that's, you know, I think that's what we're, we're looking for, some guidance here, too.
Um, you know, there's two ways of looking at this. We've got a, a situation where we've got a staff member that's hurting and is going to, maybe, perhaps, I don't know, but what if they don't perform up to the level we expect them to perform because they need that grieving time, or they're, they're working on the, the estate, or it sounds like she's the only child of, you know, trying to get all this done. So you can look at it that way. Will she be performing to the level that we need? Or do we have expectations of our staff members to, you know, obviously take time, but then come back to work and do the best that you can? It's a tough one. We don't have a lot of staff members, or a lot of, of extras. We don't have subs. We're, we're short on teacher subs this year. You know, it's a tough situation to begin, and I hate bringing it to you guys. I wish Derek and I could just sit down and say, approve, not approve. But in this situation, it's over that ten days, and I just, I can't make that decision on my own.
How has it gone so far?
With this, with this particular situation?
Yeah.
In terms of her working with the kids?
No, she's gone right now.
She's gone right now. Her being absent.
Right now, it's not been good, because we've, just because of the circumstances. It wasn't planned on the ten days. It was planning on, you know, there was a death, we'll got, be covered for a couple of days, get back to us when you can, and then, you know, so we've kind of had a revolving door with, with a pair right now with these kids, which is not good for kids, I'll be honest. We want to have continuity, especially with these kids. We want to have somebody there every day that can learn their routine, and for the kids to get to know them and get to know their personality and routines as well. So I, I can tell you right now, Terry has been working, working hard at trying to line somebody up each day right now. But now that we know, we're looking at more than just a day at a time, I think hopefully we can find someone. I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't think it's going to be very easy to find someone to cover for long chunks right now because so many people are already booked.
Is it, is it possible to request that, and maybe you can't break it up, but request that she or he work until that is decided upon, whether or not that they pass the test and they could fill in that position, and then take a week or 2 after that is decided upon, that they pass the test and they have a para ready?
The, the paras that are, are looking at, at, that we have brought on board that were on as a variance with the, with, you know, with hope that they'll pass this para pro test, you know, those, those have already kind of been, they've been used up here and there, and they've already got jobs taken.
Okay.
As a sum. Could we pull them off of them? Yes, and put them into a long, more long-term solution, yes, but then it's, you know, we're making more work for the other ones that are needing those subs, but that's a possibility. I mean, I think no matter what, we, we're gonna have to find someone to fill it, so we just wanna know, can we make this, I guess, more so, is it gonna be only 30 days that this person will be there so we can let them know? Or is it gonna be longer? I think that would be just kind of nice for, for, for us lining up the sub and for the kids to know, okay, well, listen, you know, this person is only gonna be there for this amount of time, or not, and let them readjust accordingly.
You know, with the limited information we have, kind of on what you're talking about, it'll be 10 days, the end of this week, that they've been gone from the death and the grieving. Would it be possible, I guess, to come back for a period of time, a month maybe, and then get your ducks in a row, and then ask for a request for a leave of absence, November, December timeframe, maybe where you are in a better shape, you can plan it better? And, and I know it's not all in continuous, but I don't know if what they wanna do requires continuity, or it's just, just to keep going on. We don't know, but, you know, I'm kind of wondering if maybe the end of November would be better, if, if they would be up to it to say you can have a month off, but later, we need to get more people trained, and then try and train someone in with this person or with this child, so it'd be better for everybody.
You know, I, I know what you're trying to achieve here, but, you know, if we're discussing creativity, that's one thing, but we are discussing leave of absence, and whether it's in a month, or it's next week, it's a leave of absence, and we're beginning a new process for this board to allow leave of absences. And to me, that's, that's where we're going.
It's a different situation.
Well, it is a different situation, but are we gonna now say, well, it's, it's a different situation? We can make up 50 or 60 situations if we want, but I don't know if it's, if it's charged in this board to, to do that. You know, if it's in their contract, and this is a, one of our 2 union contracts, or they're well aware of, you know, I, I can only assume we'd have to go to your... We're giving them a benefit that was never there before, contractually, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And usually, that's something that goes through the negotiation process and ends up there, but now we're saying, sure, we can do this, so we're adding something. And I'm not sure if that's the correct thing to do, but one of 6.
At what point, go ahead, Ben. Go ahead and make your point. I'm, I'm wondering, in saying that to Bob, at what point do we accept these alternative solutions, if we're to go ahead and say, what is a good reason, what's not? You know, if you got that, and go to the board, you can get that extension, at what point, what might that be? You know, and I, I don't know. I, it's, I, I agree with what you're saying, Bob. I, I think we're setting precedents. It's an unfortunate situation, and all these, it really are. The 10 days are there, and I, I think that's great that the district provides that. The hardship seems to fall on the person themselves now in getting their ducks in a row. This is outside what the school district, I think, should be responsible for. It's, it's a hardship, I understand that, but, you know, from this point on, I, I can't think of any other places of, of employment that allow that, if it's gonna cause hardship to their business or their education, and, and so it's, it's a tough decision.
Two weeks, 2 weeks ago, I, I made the motion to deny, last time, that this, we had a leave of absence in front of us, I'm gonna stay consistent, and I'll make a motion that we deny this leave of absence as well. Motion by Pat to deny the leave of absence.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. It's a good discussion. Do we have any more? Anyone else wish to speak to it? All in favor of the denial of this leave of absence, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
This carried. Tough one, everybody.
I'll talk to the staff members tomorrow. We can help.
Sure. Reports. We begin with board members. You know, we had a retreat slash work session, and I guess the crux of it was, we wanted to get up to date, if you will, on our strategic planning, and we had a report from Kurt. I think, I think it went extremely well. Kurt, maybe you'd like to speak to that, or...
Yeah, um, we got together for a work session, we just talked about where we were with the, with our goals, as to what that might look like for our strategic plan, and we all, I think, came to the same conclusion, that we're kind of on the right path as to what we're looking at for goals, and now we're gonna, with these goals that kind of follow our mission statement, we're gonna see, how do we meet these goals? So, we're gonna assign objectives to the goals which we established here with the Strategic Planning Committee. So, at this point, I think everybody's on board, and we're gonna start going ahead and setting objectives to these goals, and there'll be more to come, and that'll be for the community and, and everyone that wants to participate, whether it be isolated committees that would go hand-in-hand with this, where we break apart from the, the main committee and look at other things, and, and that are directed specifically to other, these goals and, and these values, I should say, that we've established, and just how we're gonna get it out to the public, though, we decide that we probably put some informational news in the paper, and just kind of take it from there. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a 3- to 5-year process, but I think we're going in the right direction, and, and we'll just take it day by day, month by month, so.
Year by year. Well, it's a, it's a very nice presentation you put together and made things easier for me, and I'm pretty ticked headed with that, so you did a good job there.
Oh, thank you, too, that.
You're welcome.
All the credit to Kurt.
That's right, that's right.
Any other board issues or statements or anything? Okay, we'll move down to committee reports.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll put that for later on.
You wanna go down the road a little bit?
Yeah, I'll go down to the panel for the next meeting.
Okay. Committee reports, who's met? Policy committee?
Nope. No need yet.
Curriculum, curriculum committee.
We had a virtual meeting.
Virtual innovation.
Virtually, nobody showed in. And basically, it was just to get out the final edited version of the curriculum reports. We have a meeting coming up in...
The 15th.
Next Monday.
I've got one question with that. Had some people call with the Strategic Planning Committee going on. Now, what is it, and maybe you guys can answer this, too, Beth and Derek, and what is it that you're wanting from the curriculum committee at this point? What are the goals as, as a committee? Should we be looking at as a board and as curriculum committee coming to the board and presenting? Big question, but can you... What do you, what do you have to say?
I can have that conversation in my head since I'm on both.
You know what? If you could send us a recap of that conversation tomorrow morning?
I'll try.
It's a loaded question, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I can kind of give you some ideas of some things that I'm planning for upcoming curriculum committee meetings, if that will help. One of, you know, every year, or since I've done this the last couple of years, the September meeting has always generated a lot of requests for information, and I'm gonna be fulfilling those to the best of my ability next week, with some of the questions that came up, things like, what are our course, or what are our course selections for our students? You know, how many kids are taking art classes and ag classes and business classes and all that? I have all that information compiled and ready to go, along with some ideas on the number of students who are taking online classes this year, as compared to the past, and the number of our students who are going on to post-secondary options after graduating from high school, so. Some other things that are kind of big ones that are coming up that the curriculum committee needs to know about are, you know, this year's, or next year, I guess officially, new social studies standards come through from the state, and the committee needs to know how that is affecting our curriculum district-wide. So, next week, I've got some members from the high schools, social studies department are gonna come and talk about that, so, 'cause it has, it has impacted our, I guess, our course sequence here at the high school, and talking also about what that means down the road, you know, as far as new curriculum, textbooks, things like that. The science department has got some rearranging to do based on their new standards also, and I think that there will be continuing, continuing need to talk about how the new English language arts standards are affecting everybody outside of the English department, because this is the state's first, I guess, attempt, or time, having one specific curricular areas affecting everybody. So, the English language arts standards affect all curricular areas in our school. Those are just a few of the things that are coming down the road. And then, as always, you know, in a couple of months, we'll be looking at what classes we're in offer next year, we're gonna be looking at number of requests for those classes from, from high school kids. If we're doing, looking at any budget reductions, how those budget reductions will impact those course offerings and curriculum also, so those are kind of some things that are on the agenda for the year for the curriculum committee.
I would say, just from the elementary standpoint, we're looking at, you know, science is, is probably gonna be a continuing cycle of, of just to look at where, where are we at, and, you know, with, with regards to the, the state standards and MCAs, and where are some possible gaps with our science. But it's just, you know, continuing to look at it, and then the other piece would be the language arts, the English, the Common Core ELA, English Language Arts Standards that really encompass every aspect of, of the elementary, so it's just continuing to look at those pieces. We, I think our math is, is, you know, is fine where we're at, we just need to continue to get the teachers professionally developed in understanding that curriculum and ins and outs and what it has to offer, so, but I think the curriculum aspect of it is, is in place, so.
Good, thanks, guys. Advertising and Marketing Committee, I, that was a different name before. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to apologize to Rob, I think publicly here, because this was on the agenda in my mind for our, for our last meeting, but we got a, we got a location change, so that means we had a time change, so that got lopped off, so that we weren't available, I guess, to continue that conversation, but, you know, I, I think Rob would, would love to see that up and running, and it's a...
It was voted on this spring to go forward, but now I've been told not to meet, so we're in a limbo state of, there's not even a committee. There's been one meeting, oh, you left early, I think Tim, you were there, Jake and Dave, that was it, there's nothing. So, I know you want information, and I can't give it, be like asking Kurt, give you a full Strategic Planning Committee report before it was ever formed, it'd be useless.
You know, one of my, you know, right or wrong, one of my objectives in this is that we don't get circuit overload when we begin the school year or end last year, and it's almost like there's no perfect time to get it started, but at the same time, I, you know, it was my thought that we're, as we enter into the school, new school year, we wanted to make sure everybody was up and running in their particular capacities, and I, I just didn't wanna overload anybody, I guess, so, right or wrong, that's where I've always been coming with it, and when we add something, it would be nice to subtract something, so there's no more workload, but, you know, I respect what you're saying, because we did okay this, or at least open discussions on it last spring.
I think it has helped, though, by bringing up the conversation, Rob, what I think it did is it really took the Ed Foundation to a different level, too, and I know Pat's on the committee as well, but it seems like we're getting in these amazing concerts, aren't we, Dave? And they're, they're advertising our fieldhouse, they're advertising our auditorium. We are packing an auditorium for amazing artists to come to our town and present. So, by you bringing up those conversations and kind of, I think, stirring the pot a bit, I, I think you actually did do a lot of good by doing that, because it broadened the conversation. The Ed Foundation obviously supports our school and has done remarkable fundraising, so the marketing portion of it's always kind of been there, they're out there selling our school and, and making good choices on what they spend money on, but the advertising and the promoting of our school, I don't know if it was always where it needed to be, and I think by you having these conversations, you've changed that. It is now, let's market our school, let's advertise that we have a fieldhouse for rent, we have a auditorium for rent. You know, Goodhue County Edgewood, they wanna hold all, everything here, and, and they wanna continue to do that, and I think Jake has seen an increase, too, where people are interested in renting our facilities, so I don't think this was a negative, or a, you know, no one came to the meeting kind of thing. I think it really stirred some good conversation.
Again, I think, as you may have remembered, when the building was built, I was, I, I showed my displeasure with building the building, then figured out what to do with it. The same thing here is if we put it out there, and when we finally have that full capacity need, then we decide how we're gonna facilitate it, it's too late. You almost wanna put something in place beforehand, like if we'd have built the building and said, you know what, this is what we're gonna do with the building, now let's build it to utilize it this way. You make good choices as you go along. The smaller it is when you make those decisions, the easier it is controlling control. So, I always like to put it, if I can, the horse in front of the cart, steer the cart in front of the horse. And I feel that the further you go down the road, and I know one day, Ed Foundation's time up, when they reach their milestone, they may back off of what they're doing because they'll have their endowment going, whenever that may be, what's the next step? Is there anything in place? Do we have any organization already from the school side? I don't know. So, that's where I'm looking at, to say if we wait long enough, we definitely will have a need, but then it'll be too late to create the committee to control it, because there'll be too many, I wanna say, too many heads on that horse to control, so.
And I know, I know one of the things you wanna do is lay the groundwork, or just where this would go. I think we've had some conversation about that, that was my interpretation, anyway.
We have, but at the same time, we've got professionals in the community who, I think, would be able to do that better than I could even, that I am not yet able to reach out to, to find out what would be the best way to lay the groundwork. I'm not saying I'm gonna be the best at it by any way, shape, or form, I just have the conception in the head to go, this may make sense. And if there's other people who are in marketing and advertising and promotions who say, Rob, you let me help you, we, I know we've done this for companies before, I'd be, I'd be completely open to that. They know how to do it better than I could. But as ladies asked to the board, if, and that'd be more public support, public input into the school, and I think with the referendum year coming up, that could be key, I don't know.
I can appreciate what you're saying, Bob, about burning candles on both ends. My question, Rob, is who would you think would be on this committee? Who would take the...
Commission.
Both necessarily staff people?
If they wanted to, I guess I'd be looking at Jake for the committee side, and Dave for the facility side, if they didn't wanna be on it, and then public input, people in the community who maybe haven't had a place that they can put their time in town. I'm not necessarily looking at a lot of faculty, unless they, they feel this is part of what they wanna do, and maybe there are a few out there who do, I don't know. I have yet to approach anyone about it.
You know, they've always said it was a, it was a, gonna be a community resource, a community building, you know, but, but first, it, I don't know if the right way to, it belongs to our students first, and the capacity of students, in my mind, and then whatever, whatever other activities we can put on there to, to promote that, that, that always comes in second, so. I don't know where we, you know, I don't know where we go from here, but of course, I've been holding you back, so to speak, in a direction, so it's not fair to you, because I know this is one of those passions that you had.
Well, you know, your strength when iron's hot and my iron's going cold. I'll be honest, I, I mean, you get pushed against the wall, sometimes you say, that's it. If, if I'm gonna run against the wall every time I open my mouth on it, I'm just not gonna do it. And, and I'm just being 100% honest, because that's the way we are as a board. You keep holding back a horse, the horse starts running after a while. You just lose that drive, and I feel that, that's kind of where I'm at, where we've talked about it for about a year and a half, we got approved about 6 months, and it was my fault, I didn't initially jump on it, I wasn't ready at that point, but I, I also don't know if there's gonna be one person who's interested in it, I can't tell you that. So, to lay the groundwork now is impossible, because I have no idea.
We, you know, we kind of look at this advertising, marketing, advertising and promotion, and it's, it's 4 or 5 words without a, without a source or anything like that, and I know that you've got some conceptual ideas, but I'm not sure where to go from here. Certainly, we can, you know, is the next step for you just trying to, to lay out a marketing plan or a definition about where you're going?
The next step would be to get members to a committee, put the MSBA to go out publicly, advertise, see who would wanna be on the committee, form the committee, and then from that group, then lay the foundation of what do we wanna be able to do? Bring in, hopefully Jake and Dave from the facilities piece and from the community ed piece, with the people who are out there and maybe in these industries to say, okay, what, and then the mission statement, the objectives, what do we wanna achieve with this? And then we bring that to the board to say, as a committee, we've met, we're trying to lay some foundation, this is, are the members that we have, and this is their expertise, and this is what we'd like to see about going. At that point, I think you can get input from the community, from the faculty, administration, and the board, as far as, is that a good direction, is it a bad direction? Is there another place they want it to go, or is there a place that you wanna stay out of? But until we get the foundation, there's nothing, nothing to even talk about.
I think we already approved to go ahead and reaffirm that committee.
I think we already approved to go ahead and reaffirm that committee. So can we just give a approval for that to happen?
One of the questions I always had is, you're looking for people to get on the committee and you say, hey, how would you like to be on my advertising and marketing committee? You know, I'll think about it, where would you, what's the outcome gonna be? Well, I don't know, we don't have a mission statement, we don't have anything like that, but I'd just like you to be on there. So, you know, in my, in my thinking always, it shouldn't we have a, something that we can sell particular members as to what we're doing or where we're going, rather than just having a named committee and say, we'll move forward on the fly as we-
Well, a lot of that would depend on what the board's gonna approve. I mean, did I change if, get rid of the advertising and promotions? Because I know community ed, or not community, but Ed Foundation, I know board members were afraid of that word of advertising. So, okay, promoting, promote our school more. Okay, which areas do we promote? You know, what ideas do we have to promote? Where are we looking? I mean, talking with Dave, I mean, bringing it into school, we're not, it's a, it's a process. And we're like, well, strategic planning, this is something that's gonna evolve for years, it's not gonna be done in six months and we're running. It's something that I envision with any company that starts up that creates a new department, it's gonna take a while to get there.
Yeah, ours started, got going because Tim and and Beth, they knew something about it. I guess the committee would be a get together and just start knocking heads and deciding where to go and how to go about the process, if there is a process at all. But now I see you wanna go someplace, not sure how to get there and-
Right. And it's hard to say, okay, we we figured a way, and then all of a sudden, no, you're gonna step on toes, don't go there. Well, I already put in my mission statement, well, that's where we're gonna go, well, that would be wrong on my part. So why would I mislead them to saying this is what we're about when we don't have the mission? So again, I'm looking at the experts to come in and help out as well. The experts for strategic planning, for example, are in-house. I don't think mine are in-house, mine are gonna be in the public. And if we get into different segments of the business, business community as well, with being realtors involved, I know that we've got some other that are interested in it. Because, I mean, we really don't have anything that we can promote our school, but that is one question that's asked every time a family moves in, social school life. Here's our website. You know, is there a step, we wanna start marketing here and then go to the next phase? Do I market to who's here? Do we want, you know, there's a lot of different handles, but I think that's what the community needs to do, is decide with help from the board, these are the areas that we'd like to focus on.
Would it be appropriate for you to meet with whatever staff people would be involved here? And just to just to brainstorm with them first before you take it on the community?
I think we kinda did that when we met. Um, it was Jake and Dave, Derek, it was the admin team. I I think we we accomplished enough that day that I think see that there was a need and we could move. I think if we don't step on Ed Foundation's toes with that and really look at marketing our school, if we could just call this the marketing committee, I am one hundred percent on board. We are going into a referendum, this is a time to market our school, sell our school, you know I'm out there selling it every single day. If you wanna call this the marketing committee, you will have a million supporters. I think it's just when you're on Ed Foundation this, it's just they're donating so much to our school, it felt like we were really stepping on toes. So if, I think if you move forward in this as a marketing only kind of move, I think that is phenomenal and really could benefit our school, in my opinion.
And I think when, Jake, do you remember when we talked about why we changed to promoting? It was basically the promoting of what we're doing in our school more than anything.
Sure. Well, maybe that is a better word. I remember that.
You know, what are we looking at as far as what our grade, what our classes are doing? What we're doing right in our school with our sports? It's all just an internal promotion to say that this is Cannon Falls School District. We're promoting all the things that we do with the speech, with debate, with all these different areas that maybe they don't get the press that they could or should get, so we promote it. And Dave, I think we talked about, you know, if we've got the screens in TV where we promote last night's game and this is a player who did great last night, or hey, today at three thirty, these guys leave for state. Again, it's promoting even within our district, within our school body, what our people are doing.
And we all see and hear that, I love the sound of that. But even the other night when we were trying to find a meeting time for the strategic planning, we, the admin is caught so short, we couldn't find a time. I, who's going to put that on the TV every day? Who who's gonna do that every day? We don't know who to add that to their job description. We're that thin right now that even five years ago, we used to say, oh, you know, we've got that one person, that would be a perfect job for them. We are, we are at bare bones right now. So I love what you're saying and you know that I do, I just, who who do I give that job to?
Do we have someone who can volunteer, who knows how to do that kind of work? In the public who would come in and do it for free because that's their time and talent to the school?
And then they break, they break Dave's computer, Dave comes to me and says, I need my computer. I mean, it happens. How do you feel about volunteers touching your equipment? I'll let him answer.
I think if you have-
I do see what you're saying, Rob.
I don't think we should be, but it-
There's a solution to to problems, but they just have to be identified and then look at the solutions. I mean, that, I was like-
That would be my concern. I don't know how you daily find a volunteer to do that. They still have to go find Jake every day, take Jake's time to get the results from, you know, all of those things. It it can be very time consuming on somebody, but it's good.
Well, I've told people in the past, a visionary I'm not, and I've, I guess I restated that at the workshop. So, you know, I stand corrected on this, and if I was holding you back, I apologize for that. I just, I just looked at it as another, another helping on the plate, if you will. So, you know, whatever help you need on that, it, I think we should offer it, yeah. So-
Why don't you start your next meeting and, 'cause you forgot permission to do that. Start the next meeting, get some people there, get the realtors here.
Don't tell them, go, you look at me like, I'd like to.
Just do it. Listen to Brent, I get an obligation aid.
Okay, we'll move down to the facility committee.
We have met so much in facility with the whole FEMA thing, we are sad for a little while. We, we're, our facilities are looking really good. Dave will have a report to do.
Do his report. Okay, we'll move down to the soups report. Beth?
I've just got a couple really quick items here. I've been working on the career and technical education levy, that's the CTE levy. You may see it in some of your MSBA updates. Basically a levy that school districts get to get extra support. It's based off our CTE expenditures. Our district is gonna get about forty-one thousand dollars. It's worth the time and effort I put into it to-
CTE is what?
Career and technology and tech education.
So it's gonna be designated for, or can we spend it on buses?
No, you cannot spend it on buses, unfortunately, no buses. But it does, it it's good to get that money. So I finalized the inclusive plan, it is now completed through two thousand sixteen. I learned that you don't need to do it every year, you can expand it longer. So I did the the max, so we're good through two thousand sixteen. I attended the two thousand twelve Fall Institute. This was remarkable. I spent, you know, two days with all the superintendents in the state, and it was just all about innovation and what we can do with technology. And I've got a presentation I'd like to do at one of the upcoming board meetings, but, you know, talking about if I, if Mr. Foster here is in his classes, we don't even know some of the technology that'll be available in the next four years or what we need to do to prep him to be in those things. So it was all about innovation, it was just remarkable and really refreshing. But the main thing I got from there, sitting around with all these, you know, other superintendents, is what amazing things we're doing at Cannon Falls. It was really neat to sit around tables and have these meetings and say, oh, we're already doing that, we're doing that. And and realizing sometimes we feel like we're behind or because we don't have money, we're we're struggling for things. We're doing some really great things here, and I was very proud to be from Cannon Falls at that, at that meeting. We had an inspection of our kitchens, and believe it or not, this is really hard to do, but we got a hundred percent in both our elementary and our high school. A hundred percent compliance, and I just commend Team Wendy, I like to call them, all the people working in the kitchen and, and again, Dave on that. I mean, it takes a lot to get a hundred percent compliance, I just, it's remarkable. The Rotary Gala, just giving a little plug for that, is on November tenth. Please plan to come if you can, it's a really nice event and really supports our local Rotary. And I'd like to see our, you know, they they support us and we should support them.
On November tenth?
November tenth.
Do you know the time?
I don't, I can send the details to you. It'll be, it's a very nice night. They are doing our backpacks for the weekend, and I think both the principals would agree with me when I say, what an amazing thing that's done for our school and our kids that maybe don't get that extra meal and things like that. We try not to think that's happening in Cannon Falls, but it certainly is. And the Rotary, one hundred percent, along with some support with UDAI Way, but has done a really great job with us. If you got to see the staff dance, homecoming dance I sent you, I think that was in, you weren't here, Derek, but last year, the elementary teachers got up and sang at a talent show and just blew the kids away with their singing voices. So this year, the high school staff had to go ahead and dance. So I hope you enjoyed me sending that to you. And I know we approved her tonight, but I'm really excited to have Danya, am I saying her name right? Danya, as our new transportation coordinator. She's really excited to be a part of the team. And it's always kind of fun, you don't mean to do it, but when you find out they're Cannon Falls graduate, I just think that's really neat that these people go off to college and do their thing and they come back and they wanna be a part of our school system. And you don't see that everywhere. I think that's a testament to what we're doing here and doing some great stuff. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Beth. Head of Operations and Maintenance, that would be you, Dave.
Okay. Yeah, as far as the facility committee and stuff like that, I guess I'd like to look at the beginning of November, have a meeting. Then when things are done, I still got a lot of items in the fighter here that we can take care of and stuff. We've gone through all the FEMA stuff, all the paperwork's been filed and everything's submitted to FEMA. And when that's approved, it goes to the state and then the state pays us, so. But, yeah, there's still some things to finish up on Community Center and stuff like that. Other things that we've been looking at, we have a safety committee meeting here a week or so ago, and we're looking at, as far as PA system over at the elementary school and as, that's the other thing I, we were looking at, but looking at, clocks, okay, clocks. And so looking at a few things through there. Another thing that we're looking at here at the high school is our main brain, our computer room, back in the IMC, as far as UPS power and stuff and taking care of that. And so we got a lot of different things going. So I think the beginning of November will be a good time for facility meeting to, and hopefully, everything that I feel should be done by that time will be done and-
Be a short meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
David, we we got the contract already out there for the snow removal and all that for this year, correct?
Yeah, I think they've got one more year on the list. Now, the other thing I was gonna tell you to, today, they ripped out the parking lot standards, the ones that were damaged and the ones that are in place. And like, folks will back on June on Friday, so that'll be taken care of there before the maintenance.
Thank you, Dave. Principal's Report, Derek?
Okay. Well, just to piggyback on what Dave said, Dave came down with, what was it, Ryan, Ryan Electric?
Eric Olson.
Eric Olson from Ryan Electric. And we went around and just kinda talked about, you know, this all stemmed from that safety committee and where it was a little concerning to me as the elementary principal, how do I get a message out if there is something where we need to, we need to lock down for for any reason? And so, you know, knowing that there there weren't too many outside speakers, that's kinda where it stemmed from, where we're gonna look at, you know, we need to make sure we can get, or that I can get, or anybody in the elementary can get a message outside to people. And on last Thursday, we did a, kind of a speaker check. We wanted to figure out which speakers in the ceilings were working, which ones are not. And we found that thirty-three, actually, of the speakers that were in the building were not working. And we have a feeling that it's a lot of the hallway ones, which unfortunately are kind of the most important ones because if if there is a reason to lock down, typically we wanna get the kids out of the hall. And also either get them away from the building or get them in the building, whatever it may be, as soon as possible. So the two areas where where the most concern for me as principal is the, is the interior and the hallways and the outside, which are the two areas that are in most need. So we're kinda jumping on this, and I appreciate Dave for working with me and really getting the ball rolling with this. But, you know, we have ninety that are working, but thirty-three of them are not. And so we're gonna look at that and look and to see what does it take to to repair them and or replace them. So we're looking into that.
Just, just real quick, keep in mind that you don't have thirty speakers failing at the same time. There's one place that's failing that is causing thirty speakers to fail. So you've gotta wire somewhere, or you've got a component somewhere that is causing thirty speakers not to work. So it's not a, it's not a replacing thirty speakers or repairing the thirty speakers, it's that one link that goes to the thirty that you, is where your problem is.
Yeah. And, yeah, we we hope that we don't have to replace any. Some, however, are are not working, they're muffled or staticky, but we're looking into that as well, that'll be part of that, that walkthrough. But it it's on our radar, so just to give you an update on that. We sent home a letter to all the elementary students about RTI, just kinda giving an overview. I wanna give you guys another overview. I know I talked quite a bit about RTI, Response to Intervention. It's, it's, I'm, I'm really pleased with how how well it's gone so far. We've, we've kind of assessed all of our kids, K three, and, well, every kid K two, we assessed through either, you know, the AMES web or other diagnostic assessments, plus teacher input, plus classroom assessments. So we have a really good, we have an, almost an exact idea of where these kids are at, what they need help in, and now we're, we're in that process of, we have the interventions already going and getting those kids back up to where they need to be. And and this is all literacy right now that I'm talking about, K three. Very excited, we've got a great team working hard on that, so it's going really well. And then in the four or five, we've got Ms. Reich, who's really working hard with math and reading throughout her day in fourth and fifth grade. And really just pinpointing, using as much data as we have and can get, on exactly where are those kids that that might be struggling a little bit and matching interventions to match their exact needs. So it's going very well, you know, very pleased with where we're at. A couple other things, conferences, we have coming up, the elementary, next Monday, Tuesday. And then we we had talked a little bit about the parking and and drop-off situation at the elementary, wanted to give you an update. It's gone a lot better. We've, we've got, the whole front row closest to the building has has been left open for parents. And any, anybody that's dropping off kids where they would need to park their car and get out of their car, we have asked that any parent doing that, just pull up in that front row, it's gonna be left open for all of that, so no staff will park there. And since then, we've had a lot less people pull up, park their car on the yellow curb, walk their kids in, just in, you know, with the help of Chief McCormick, we've really, I think, gotten a pretty good handle on that. So that's going well. Any questions?
Been busy.
Busy. It's an understatement.
Okay. Jim?
I wanna first introduce Ryan Foster, who will be our junior class representative to the school itself. Welcome, Ryan, he's a great guy and very involved in things here at school, and I think he'd be a nice addition to the work. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank a few people. Thanks to Roxanne Soder for her work in Burning Victor the Viking to present Play Sixty-two, the K eight student body last Thursday.
First grade.
Oh, was it K?
No, they got left out.
The one through eight.
They got them in the first grade.
And that programmer went really well. Last week was our homecoming week. Thank you very much to the student council for all of their hard work and putting together a good week, and Kate Dolan for being the leader of that group. Also, thanks to Deb Clegg and Kristen Hoffman for planning and putting together a great homecoming court presentation, again, like they do every year. Mid-quarters were, our mid-quarter time was last Wednesday, and students will receive their mid-quarter grades tomorrow in their home room class. I had the opportunity, thanks to Jake, I think, to attend my first ever HBL Executive Committee meeting last Wednesday, which was an experience for me. executive committee meeting last Wednesday, which was an experience for me. Um, yeah, and I'm sure he's going to talk about that in his part with activities. Uh, Wednesday we had a strategic planning meeting also last week, that was good. We did a lot of, I think a lot of catch-up work that we missed for the last month or so. Um, Derek and I attended the GCD principals meeting in Red Wing to discuss ed district, um, ideas relating to special ed and relating to some of our PLC work, um, and RT, the RTI work that the whole ed district is working towards. That was a good meeting. Um, it was interesting because there's construction around, all the way around the Jefferson Building in Red Wing, so that was kind of neat to see Jake driving his little roll in last week.
Yeah. I didn't give a very good direction, so I didn't do the same thing.
My first round of teacher observations are wrapping up this week, so, um, I have one more teacher to observe and I'll be through the, for the, my non-tenured staff, uh, one time. Um, I'm just going to be starting the process of evaluating my tenured staff here in the next couple of weeks also, so that'll ramp up. I've got, um, quite a few more evaluations to do this year because I have eight non-tenured staff, um, that have to be evaluated three times. So, um, that's, that's going to be a busy year for teacher observations for me this year. Um, we've got our third PLC late start on Wednesday of this week. Classes start at eight-thirty, um, just for channel twelve, classes start at eight-thirty, just in case there are a couple of our students watching. Education Minnesota conferences or, or, uh, MEA conferences are, are coming up on Thursday the eighteenth and Friday the nineteenth of this month. And, um, curriculum committee meeting next Monday at five, if you want to come and be a part of that, you're more than welcome. Um, and just a kind of a, it's a kind of a, an update, um, my math specialist, Brian Swanson, has been working hard in our, he's been focusing in kind of our middle grades, our seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth grade, uh, with our tenth grade students. And, um, right now he's seeing about twenty-five students a day, so, um, on a regular basis throughout the day, um, pulling kids out of class, going and getting kids from their study halls or from their target classes in the middle school. So, um, we're seeing some good success there.
I have a, I have a question for you. This comes from a, comes from a parent.
From a parent perspective?
No, from a actual parent.
Okay.
Um, their, their child is, um, has paid for the parking pass, but yet when they drive through the parking lot, they notice cars in the parking lot without parking passes.
Right.
Who's monitoring and what are we doing about it?
Well, um, now that homecoming is over, um, I'm going to be going out and putting some notes on some of the cars. So, as far as how far we decide to push that, um, the, the problem is, I can, I, I can't identify necessarily whose car is which, because I can't go to the police and ask them, can you tell me whose car this belongs to based on a license plate?
Yeah, you don't know if it's a visitor that's pulled in.
I, you know, I'm assuming that most of them are students that haven't paid. Um, you, you know, I think that our policy, I think we reserve the right to tow vehicles if we want to. The question is just, do you want me to have vehicles towed? Um, that's going to be a pretty contentious thing, so.
Right.
Um, it hasn't been done to this point, just because I haven't had time to do it, um, but I should have a little bit more time now that homecoming's over and we're kind of getting settled in a little bit, so. Um, so yeah, we'll be checking on that. And you're right, there, I was in the parking lot, um, last week for homecoming and there are an awful lot, awful lot of cars that don't have parking passes.
And we, and we have a record of those who do, so.
Right.
You know, if you've got thirty kids that have paid and you've got a hundred cars in the parking lot, the math is pretty simple.
Yep.
I think if you left like a note, a violation notice or something like that and let them know if there were two or three offenses, they would be towed or, I don't know where you do the line, but maybe not the first time, of course.
Right. And, and that's what we did last year. It was successful last year. Um, I had Mr. Gizvol go out and do that, um, on a Friday afternoon. I just don't have anybody to, to go out and do that this year. So, it's just a matter of finding a time to, to get out there and stick notices under windshield, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Community ed, I'm not sure we shouldn't put community ed slash activities on this end board because I'm sure the presentation's going to do poorly.
Um, just before this meeting here, I know that some representatives from youth sports in the area, um, because we do sports every year, before we know it, so we schedule gym spaces through February with J.O. volleyball, youth athletics, uh, boys are both basketball and volleyball. So, as always, the facility's going to be very busy this winter. Um, offering elementary Spanish class that I mentioned in the last one with the Amity intern, um, it's been very popular. We actually split it up into two classes. Um, over thirty kids signed up for that, I think we're probably pushing forty now. So we have a Monday class and a Wednesday class, which goes for eight, eight sessions each, so. Uh, very popular, thanks to Danielle, I think is how you say his name, for doing that and he'll make some money out of it as well. Um, advisory council, we're, we'll have our first advisory council meeting probably in the next, um, couple of weeks. We typically have one early October, but with Molly being out, we haven't done that yet. Um, the Minnesota community education conference is coming up, um, the week of MEA, so I'll be out for a couple of days in Mankato doing that. On the athletics tennis, uh, won their first section matchup last Wednesday. They go to Oatana tomorrow morning, um, for their second round of sections. And as Tim mentioned at our meeting last Wednesday, uh, most of that meeting, we talked about realignment of the HBL again, this time for basketball. Um, we voted to approve a change in the realignment, but I have a feeling we haven't heard the end of that. So, um, we're going to split it up into, um, the five biggest schools will be the gold and the eight smallest schools will be the blue. Play everybody want, or play everybody in the blue twice. Everybody in the gold wants to have a nineteen conference games. Um, we would be in the blue with the small schools in this alignment, um, but it does change some things. Um, right now we're in Oatana, it's leaving the HBL starting next year, um, so that was when Hayfield and the new alignment will move over to the blue, so we'll play Hayfield twice a year, so it does, um, change some things with the alignment. We voted to approve that agreement, but as I said, it might not be over yet, so.
What, what league is Cotter moving into?
The Three Rivers.
Three Rivers?
Yeah.
When you say we voted for that, not everybody voted for that is my guess, um...
That was not a unanimous vote.
The people, if you consider of the, uh, time it takes to get down to some of these schools, would be voting no, I would think.
All I know is our next superintendent's meeting next week, they, it's usually a two-army and they said it's a side-four, so.
The first proposal listed is swap Lake City and Cotter, or Lake City and Hayfield. Um, move Lake City into the gold and, and Hayfield into the blue. That was voted down and, uh, a different AD brought up to go eight small schools, five big schools and that one, um, and a pretty close vote, so they got eight ABS votes, so that one's approved.
Thank you. That's it?
Yep.
Ryan?
Um, well, I guess, uh, as Mr. Hodges, uh, pointed out, last week was homecoming week. Um, obviously a very stressful kind of week, especially for the student council. But, uh, uh, talking to multiple teachers and, uh, just from them walking up to me or, um, other people from the student council, other representatives, um, it sounds like school spirit is definitely, uh, has been given a boost this year. Lots of people participating, uh, that I've noticed, uh, this year than in past years. This past weekend, um, on Saturday, the junior class officers, um, they had a five-K, one-K run-walk fundraiser for, uh, um, the fundraising for prom this coming spring, uh, in which all the money goes to the, uh, the planning and the, uh, the place prom will be held. Uh, and it sounds like it was a pretty good turnout. There was about, uh, one hundred thirty runners and walkers, um, so it sounds like we're revving up for a good prom. Um, I'm friends with a couple of the, uh, debate team members. Um, this past weekend on Saturday as well, they had a tournament at Anoka and, um, all three teams won three rounds and, uh, and then lost two, but, uh, I don't know exactly how that works, but it sounds pretty good.
Three and two is always good.
And, uh, this Saturday, they will be at Lakeville. And, uh, I guess for upcoming events this Wednesday, um, uh, there's going to be the National College Fair in Minneapolis, uh, that's the tenth. And, um, uh, a lot of the teachers, um, have been asking students who's going to be gone and the majority of the class raises their hand, um, hopefully to go to the college fair and not. Uh, yeah, it sounds like that's going to be a good turnout as well.
Well, we've all been to college fair, we understand. You know, most of the fundraisers made them on the five K.
Uh, I'm not sure exactly, I think they're probably still, um, getting those numbers.
It was, I know my, my daughter did it, it was twenty-five dollars they had and they got a T-shirt, so who knows what the T-shirt was, but they had a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty people at twenty-five bucks they had.
Well, we, some paid, didn't participate though. We don't have many juniors and seniors in the building that day.
On the, uh, on the fundraiser, on the, on the K run.
Well, that's what I was talking.
Yeah, whatever, whatever length that was. Now, before we, uh, the class used to do magazine sales.
Yeah. I think they, I think this year they just wanted to kind of mix it up a little bit and not just do the same old magazine selling, go to, going door-to-door and just kind of, uh, maybe get the community involved a little more and from the numbers they had, it sounded like it was a pretty good outcome.
It was very fun. I mean, just from a...
Vikings team?
We looked, we had Viking caves, we were, we were in spirit, we were there.
And Schwade and Jen Sweet are the junior class sponsors and, um, they said that this is the best fundraising that they've done in the last several years, so.
Great.
Uh, it was a good switch for them, so.
I mean, as, from my perspective as a parent, I would rather just donate money straight up than buy something that I might use or might not use and you don't get as much money, just my perspective. I thought, you know, it's a hundred percent going right to you guys, it's great, it's fun.
So either way. Ryan, and welcome to our group again. And, uh, just know that this always doesn't happen, we can run into OT here quite frequently. Thanks again. Um, upcoming meetings, we got a regular board meeting on October twenty-two. Uh, items for the next scheduled meeting? Rob, you had something?
Yeah, um, and we did it last year and it's, it's something that, um, I guess we're supposed to annually, it's just, I don't think it's ever really been done, which is Lord and I pledge allegiance, being said in classrooms. And, I know last year we brought it up, but actually the statute says it has to be voted on annually by the school board. I don't know when it normally would or should be.
We are, we are doing it, just so you know, but.
Yeah, I know. It's supposed to be voted on annually, so.
I got a question, this is, Ryan, you're not responsible for me bringing this question up. Um, we talked about, this was for fundraising for prom and I've always wondered, even when my daughter asked me, you know, we're going to raise money and it's, my question is, is where are we at with functions like this as to how much money goes towards prom? What does it cost to do what we're, they're doing? You know, getting a bus, renting out a facility, um, because this all comes down to parents paying for it, um, people donating money for it, yet we, we don't know exactly where this money's going to go and what it's going to be used for it. Not saying it's my responsibility or my know-how, uh, as to where it should be appropriate, but there should also be some responsibility on the students now saying, this is what we need, this is what we can get by with, and this is something where all money comes from someplace. And I think it'd be nice to know what are the plans, what have we spent on prom in the past years? And how is this breaking down and are families still being able to afford some of these activities that we are offering, such as prom? Because everything's going up in price, everything's got to be paid for. I'd just like to get an idea of...
I think they actually do and I started that and Ryan can say if they don't or not. I don't know if you're on that committee or not, but if they only raise four thousand dollars, they may not get the DJ they want, or they may not have the decorations that they want. It, it really is, you get what can fit in your budget. I think it's a great example of teaching these kids, you know, you guys didn't go out and sell magazines, you know, or whatever it might be, you didn't raise that money, we can't do it. They don't change the price of what to get in, but the quality or the, how elaborate prom is depends on fundraising.
Yeah. And I understand that, I really do. My, my, my issue isn't anything like that, my issue is they're still going out and getting money. Where is the point where enough is enough versus, okay, we can get, we can spend seven thousand if we get it, or we can spend five thousand if we get it, or we can spend three thousand. All money out there comes from someplace and it comes from the community. And then there should also be a responsibility of the students, I believe, saying, look, we got a budget of twenty-five hundred, we're going to go raise twenty-five hundred, we're going to spend twenty-five hundred, not saying, if we get seven thousand, we're going to spend seven thousand. I think they should have a budget, stick to it, decide what they want to do and go from there.
I think you should be the prom advisor. I do, I think that would be really good.
I'm just, I'm just saying that it's just being fiscally responsible as students. And also it, it's, eventually it's, it's like setting precedents again, it's like, if we can do it, we're going to do it next year and we're going to spend a hundred and some dollars on a tux and we're going to spend two hundred and some dollars on a dress, we're going to, and then we have, we've all been there and it keeps going and it, every family is finding it harder and harder to pay for this. And it's a very touchy subject, but nobody wants to touch it either. And I think, I think as a, as a, as a member, I think this also needs to be looked at at some time because there's always precedence being taken and it's always going to cost a little bit more. And I think we really need to look at that too, of what we're spending out there for, for activities such as this.
Seriously, how many times are they coming to the well?
Yeah, well, sure, sure.
As they pull a little bit up for the prom, they pull a little bit up for here.
Every, everybody wants what's best for the kids, but let's be realistic about it. I mean, now, like I said, they go to MacArthur's or wherever, they rent out a facility, I don't know if they take a Greyhound bus too? No, okay. But it's like now we've got a beautiful facility here, we used to have prom here, you know, and the dances here. Um, and I understand you can keep them all together, but you don't...
We actually found that it was more expensive here because they have to basically cover up that it looks like a gym, I guess is what they would tell you.
Yeah, at one time we just were in a gym.
But here's, I, you, you're right, but the difference, when we did it versus how they do it now though Kurt, is they come to the grand march here, then they all leave as a group, they all eat together and they spend that night out at MacArthur's. Or when we used to do it, you'd go out to eat in the north knows where, you know, it was nothing to, even back then. They were spending, dropping big money, but that was our, our choice, just like it is today to go, but we'd all go and then we'd come back for grand march and if people would leave, then we'd have the dance in a gym, which part is right?
Yeah. But, you know, this looks like it can be its own discussion. We struck a nerve here for sure. Maybe we invite the prom advisors?
Sure.
Just come in for discussion.
That's good. Because we don't have any...
The other thing about this is, although, this is a junior class fundraiser, so this money stays with them their junior and senior year and it pays for prom their junior year and it pays, it goes to offset costs of graduation their senior year. So there is, there is some budgeting there because the prom advisors know they can't spend all of it because this money pays for the, the folder that their diploma comes in and it pays for their caps and gowns and their bootneers and corsages and all that kind of stuff too. So, um, it doesn't just go for prom. And I think, I think in defense of our prom advisors, they're pretty frugal about the way they spend that money and they're pretty conscious of that. They've really worked, since I've been here, the last two years, they've really worked hard to keep the prom ticket prices down. My wife works in a metro district and, boy, the prom ticket costs what your daughter's dress probably did, just to get into that prom. Um, it's, it's, it can get really costly really fast, but they do a nice job of keeping prices down.
I think though, you know, with my kids, they realize that if they didn't raise enough funds, they were going to end up dinner at McDonald's and dad as they're DJing the gym, so that pushed them out on the street to, uh, fundraise funds as much as they could. Just joking, I love my kids. But, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't, my opinion is that it's not really the board's issue. That's just my opinion. Um, you know, we approve the fundraisers, but we don't limit the football teams, how much money they can raise, the basketball people, how much money they can raise and so on and so forth. If the junior class wants to go out and raise a billion dollars and spend it how they, how the advisors see fit, that's, that's their business.
Let's, uh, let's cut it off with that. And I think it's worth some discussion. It's already brought up a, a few issues and, uh, I think we can at least have some discussion, ask the advisors and Kurt. But I, I kind of agree with Pat in it, but I think we can end up with a long-term conversation with it, so I don't know when we stick it on there.
Can you think of all the fundraisers that go on? Where do you think prom lands as far as fundraising? Just out of curiosity.
Let's not know. Let's not know.
You'd be surprised.
We... We have other things.
Very low.
So yeah, we, we do have to discuss it because it, it was brought up. I think it's a good idea. Any, anything besides the Pledge of Allegiance that we should throw in there and recognize that at the next meeting? Anybody got anything? If not, you know, when we have an opportunity for an item to throw on like this, we should do that.
We will have to eventually talk about what Dave and Linda have been working on as far as rewiring of the, the technology and some things like that. We're working on getting some bids and things in, but that will most likely be on the next board meeting too, because we need to move ahead with that.
What about facilities first?
It'll go through facility, but that's, that's coming up. So we need to.
November meeting. Okay, public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the cause? Limited participants here this evening, so I'm guessing not. Okay. Having said that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make one.
I'll second.
Kerry made that motion and Pat seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Kerry.